Have we ready? All good? All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. The time is 6:30 PM. We're in the Eldon F. Marara Board of Select Meeting Room on the second floor. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and our local cable station. If you can stand, I'd ask you to stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, again, good evening. First item on the agenda tonight is a vote to approve the entertainment license from Eminem Leandro LLC, doing business as Miguel's Table, located at 105 Copeland Street, or probably for the next year, 20 years in town, being referred to where Frida's was. As we tend to change slowly on those things. But thank you for coming out. We just like to sort of touch base on the entertainment licenses in particular, and especially in your case where you're somewhat in a residential area. So we try to be sensitive to everybody's needs, obviously yours and your neighbors. So I don't know, you know, it's probably hard a little bit to look five years down the road and tell us what you have planned, but when we see things like disc jockey, dancing, we just, we want to check in and, to be honest, we've, you know, we're not, this, I speak for myself, but I think this sport's just not a giant nightclub fan in a location or something like that, so. And without, without conversation, we can't draw, well, we can draw probably a wrong conclusion based on that, so. I'll let you talk about what you might have in mind for entertainment.
So I like, I'm looking for is for the same thing that we have in Easton. In Easton, you guys can, no, we never have any, any problems. Our neighbors love the music, love everything else. Normally, what we do is one or two person, just with a guitar and a mic, just singing. For this, for the people that is inside, of course, we don't want anything louder neither. And the pretty much that is for, are we looking for? Just to have some entertainment there for one guy playing, maybe two, and that's it. And the hours that you're asking for is for many reasons that you ask for all those hours. Because let's say if we open it up for brunch, we don't want to come here and ask for the approval again. Doesn't mean that we're gonna have music every day, doesn't mean you're gonna have to midnight or one o'clock. Some days, let's say for maybe a ziv, you might have someone playing to like midnight and do the midnight toast. That is the reason why we ask for all those hours, to have that very daily to do it if you have to. But of course, we don't want to disturb any neighbors or anything like that. And we looking to go to the same direction that we have in Easton right now. And there we have a house is maybe 25 feet, 30 feet away from the building. And we have no issue at all. That neighbor, whenever you have some meetings in the town, he go over there to support us because we been good to each other both ways.
Okay.
So that pretty much all of you.
What was your name, sir?
Manny.
Manny, Manny, I'll be honest, for, you, you just answered every single question I had involving your license. So I really appreciate you being, being prepared. Cause you literally answered every question I had personally, so thank you for that detailed explanation.
Yeah, absolutely, I completely agree. So I know that we had discussed when you came in here previously, and I think I had asked you specifically if you had any intention of operating like a nightclub, and you reassured me that you didn't. And, and it sounds like from what Manny's saying, that's also the case. So, I mean, that, that, that doesn't sound terrible to me, it sounds great to me. I just want to reinforce, and like you know, in Easton, you, you have that neighbor that's really close. You are in a residential neighborhood here, so I mean, there are residents all the way around you and everything. So we just want to make sure that you are respectful and, you know, respectful of your neighbors and stuff. Just a question, so I know one or two guys playing a guitar, that sounds great, I can't wait to come and see that. The dancing by the patrons, just a,
I, I would just,
just in case somebody stood up and danced?
Yeah. But not, not on a DJ, not, they just, in case they want to dance.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I got it, just covered.
Just to be safe.
Yeah, that's all.
Yep, yep, but you don't intend to be hosting?
No, no, there is no space for that to be.
That's what I, I was curious about that as well, because we've all been in Frida's, obviously. I know that it is limited as far as the space. So, yeah, no, I think, just like Mike said, you answered all of our questions. My only concern is the disc jockey, I know that that can get quite loud sometimes.
But I don't think we, yeah, I put that in, you know, but,
Just in case, I'm sure, yes.
Yeah, just in case.
I just want to make sure that I say everything I love, that I want to say, that, that, that is of course at an appropriate level, you know, at appropriate times and such, so, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just like if you guys were, if you guys lived in town, we'd, you know, we're kind of expect the businesses to be polite to the neighbors, so that's the only thing, but I do appreciate Manny being prepared for, for, you literally answered, I think, all of our questions in one conversation, which was awesome. Ready?
No, yeah, that's it, I've, you know, I've been in that building multiple times on St. Patrick's Day, and a couple guys playing away and having an absolute blast, and no impact to the neighbors, so that's fantastic. Assuming you can, you can do that again, everything will be great, so.
Yeah, and then on this form, it says midnight, but I think on the other request it was 1 AM?
This is Sunday.
Yeah, so correct, so your, your, the vote before the board or the, you know, your consideration is that there are two licenses. There's a Monday through Saturday, and on that form they put till 1 AM. And then there's also a Sunday entertainment license, and on that form they put until midnight. So if you're acceptable for both of those, for Monday through Saturday and the Sunday, and you're okay with the hours, you could just say approved as presented or accepted.
Yeah, I mean, are we all okay with the hours?
Yes.
Yes.
After that explanation, I a hundred percent am. Ready for a motion, I make a motion to accept the entertainment license for Eminem Leandro's LLC doing business as Miguel's Table located at 105 Copeland Street as presented.
Second?
Home favorite.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
How's it going, by the way?
Doing good.
Really different from what was?
Yeah, oh, really, oh, we're excited, yeah.
We hope to open up on the next couple weeks, we're gonna be delighted to have body notes. But I have another question, if you have never went, we came in, I don't know if it was a mistake or was on our liquor license, they were saying Tuesday to Sunday, and we also tried to apply that for month, for seven days a week.
He's saying it's only Tuesday through Sunday for the liquor license?
We've already done it.
Oh, that's already been corrected, okay.
We changed the hours last meeting.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, so on the license, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
I forgot about that.
So we took care of that the last meeting?
Thank you so much for understanding that.
No, we, we wish you the best, and we'll be it.
We're all looking forward to being in.
Yeah, let us know when you open, honestly, we would love to, yeah, we'll come.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night, drive safe, stay warm.
All right, moving on, we get a little ahead of the schedule here, but that's fine. 6:45 PM, budget 1550, data processing.
Data processing coordinator, just figured 3% on last year's salary. Office equipment and repairs and GAS update, and the same, pretty consistent, 1,000. Data processing services, had a little bit of an increase on that because of KBS, that, that's an unusual climb every year. The network tech consultant, basically the increases are renewals on, on service contracts. Some of the equipment's getting older, and the renewals go up a little bit each year, so. That pretty much accounts for that, hub services basically did not go up this year. Internet connection, we're under contract with Comcast for all that, for police, water department and the whole town, and that's, and that's E-rated for the town itself, not for police or other water department. Network equipment, 4,600, and that's a split. The tech consultant, internet connection and network equipment are splits with the school department and the water department. This was our, our share. Computer supplies has been the same, and computer training, I mean, I'm sorry, computer equipment at 5,000. So it's, it's pretty close to last year.
Yeah, pretty straightforward.
Yep.
I don't have any questions?
I don't think you answered anything, not that there was anything crazy here.
Yeah, yeah, really.
Have nothing? No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, all right, take care.
Did you come down just for us?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you, sorry.
Come down Thursday too.
Oh, boy.
We tried to get this combined, it didn't work this year, maybe.
Actually, 1:20 it was in my favor.
Super, thank you.
Drive safe.
All right, uh, next, library.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, so for the, the first line item, I just have 3% cost of living increase for, that's my position. The second one, it says 4.34, and that's for all of the clerical staff. I think that's the percentage, it was, it's based on 3%, but because of the years, not an exact 52 weeks. The next one down, assistant department head, that's also a 3% cost of living increase. Going down to longevity, I was just off by $3, it looks like, last year, so, and no one's, no one's longevity is actually changing, so that's a $3 increase. I am asking to increase heating by $500, and I was basing that off like projected cost of heat.
Prior to the last year, yeah.
Yeah, hopeful it's not too high there. We did keep our electricity the same, we've been really benefiting from the solar panels and all of that stuff, so I haven't gone over our budget or anything with the electricity.
Cool.
For janitorial property maintenance, I put 2.13, just to keep it in even, increase of $250, and that's just, you know, for general increase of cost of supplies. I kept office equipment, repairs and maintenance the same. Property maintenance and municipal building repairs are, both look like very large increases. I am asking for 3,000 more for property maintenance than last year, which shows 25% increase. The building's 35 years old, so we're consistently having to replace things now. We've been having a lot of issues with the sprinkler system, and we just had to replace the water heater, and so it's just coming to be a lot, we've already gone over our budget this year, just from other things as well. So I kind of, I was looking at what we had already spent this fiscal year to project up the increase of cost. And I, similarly, we haven't taken, or we may have by now, but when we had this spending year to date, we hadn't taken anything or used the municipal building repairs line item yet, but similarly, we just expect to possibly have to repair more parts of the building, or just in general, things around the property. We are not asking for an increase in technology, telephone or office supplies, a lot of those have stayed pretty consistent as far as what we've been paying. Okay, so books and periodicals, we have to spend a certain percentage of our total budget on materials for the library, so there's like a big, long equation that I have to do for the percentage. I believe it's 16 or 17%, so that's what the increase there is, of 4%, the overall budget. And then the last three line items, we're not asking for anything more from sales, our network, dues or meetings, or equipment replacement, so, you know, you get down to the bottom and it's a rounded 4% increase we're asking for.
I mean, nothing looks crazy to me.
No, I don't, I get it. You know, I, I understand the, the building maintenance and the property.
Is it enough?
I was gonna say, it is quite low, really, especially when you just said you had to replace a water heater, I'm thinking, yeah.
It's really hard to know with this kind of thing, because we don't know what to expect.
Yeah, and I just say, because I mean, we're trying to make our best estimate possible.
Right.
And you already went over budget last year, so.
That was a big thing that should have been taken care of, and I was trying to take care of it for a while, and it was not on our end that it didn't get taken care of. So I think that's why it costs more, because we're also paying to maintain this thing that needed to be replaced. In that, the sprinkler system is probably what we have the biggest issues with in our building in general.
What are the plans for that going forward?
So it's almost entirely, it's, it's basically like fixed, we replaced the, the piping that needed to be replaced and everything, and now essentially, we just need to have someone go through and check for like the minor leaks and everything. But essentially, there was a very long, like 60-foot pipe that was 35 years old, that needed to be replaced. And it got to the point where they couldn't even patch it up and like band-aid it anymore. And, yeah, I was trying to get ahead of that, but it doesn't always happen. So that's why that line has been so much, I don't think it should have been that much if it had been addressed the way it should have been. So, to answer your question, I'm not sure if that is enough, but I also can't predict what we're gonna lose and what's gonna break and all that sort of thing. We do, we have a lot of calls about our heating, like to get our HVAC fixed and everything, so I don't think it would like completely, you know, break down, because there are consistently smaller parts being replaced. And I think those are the two big things that we pay for, you know, contractors to come out and help us with.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, ladies, drive safe.
Thank you. Assessors. Come on up.
We're moving right along.
Yes, we are.
Glad you got here, nice and early.
You guys are all here early, and we're just, we're keeping it going.
You guys almost match, it's adorable.
Almost.
I know.
Look at that.
Very West Bridgewater.
The assessors come coordinated.
The town colors.
I like it. Trying to butter you up, right? Exactly, all right. Get prepared.
Our budget's not totally crazy. Most of it you'll see is all, the increases are contractual. So they're, they're pretty, you know, they're, they're just controlled by the contract, there's nothing we can do. We really didn't have any other increases except for one minor little thing. And it's only for $7,500. And that is for another software program, or a software program, that would benefit not only the assessors department, it can be used by Board of Health, the water department, DPW, anybody can use it. It's not, goes by a license where you'd have to buy additional users, anybody can log into it that has the information. So I will let Daniela explain it better, because she has used it for a trial period, but it's something that I think is a great investment, not only for us, but as a town.
I want to know more.
Educate us, Daniela.
We got a nice little two-week demo of it, which was fantastic. The inspectional services all logged into as well, as well as Dave Taylor from GAS, she was in on that too. So we all just got to kind of play around with it and see how it works, and it's pretty amazing. They've come a long way with what they can do, it's just a little sheet of information. I did ask them how many towns in Massachusetts use it, so they told me 128 Massachusetts agencies and municipalities use it. It is really popular among assessing and GAS, but as Paula said, anyone can use it, and a lot of different departments do use it within these different towns. But they just take the imagery in a different way than the state flyovers, and it's more consistent. So you get two or three flyovers each year, and the way that they do it, you get three-dimensional views, and you can look around a building, you can look above it, you can get how many heights a building is, you can do all the different measurements. Their measurement tools are highly accurate and within six inches when you use their online software, and it keeps all of the data in their database, so you can go back and forth and see how things have changed over the years, which is a pretty amazing tool. It's really helpful for assessors, you know, if someone puts on a deck and we go by and they have a fence, we don't know if the deck is done or not, you can easily just go on and measure it, make sure it's what we think it's supposed to be, and add it on to the, to the property record cards like we're supposed to, so it's just another tool, and just really effective, and really well done, they've come a long way with this.
Yeah, tell me more about, because you started to talk about the WIFM, and I think it's important to understand like what it will do to your department and how it will make you more efficient, as well as the others, so tell me more about that.
Yeah, so as far as assessing, some of these really large buildings, we can check the measurements on that. We can, like I said, solar permits and permits like that, they're just outdoor, you just double-check and make sure that things are done. When we're going by houses, people aren't super receptive to me coming to their door all the time, and that's totally fine, but it makes it hard to do my job and to make sure that these building permits are closed out, and that we have all the right information on our cards. So it's just a better way to get the accurate data for our department, and make sure that everything is recorded properly.
Right on, no, I just wanted to ask that, because I, I was picking up what you were putting down, what I think, like, other people that are watching or, or listening, maybe they want to know a little more, so that's what I was asking. I like technology, so I think that's cool.
Yeah, it is really amazing.
The, the fee, it was $7,500?
Right.
And that's one time?
It's an annual contract that you have with them for the flyovers that they do and using their software, but it is for all employees in the town, so everyone can log in, all the different departments can use it, there's no limit on that.
So unlimited users?
Yep.
That's cool.
Is there a contract that that $7,500 is good for?
Yeah, so the way they do their pricing is based on the size of the town, so we're one of the lowest, we are the lowest tier, and that's the price for us.
And do they have an escalator clause in the contract? It's not gonna be 12 grand next year?
There's nothing like that in the contract, but I don't know if they have increased over the years, I don't know that for sure, I could find that out.
That would be good to know, because you spend a lot of time on software contracts. When they're generous in the beginning, they usually come back to get you. So it just might be something to get in there before you, if you move forward, when you move forward.
Now, you mentioned, or it says here that it integrates easily with current mapping software, and then you mentioned Deb Taylor, so she was using it with the software that she uses and everything is,
She double-checked to see if that would work with her software, and it worked on her end too, yeah.
Great, great, good. And you said this covers two flyovers a year?
Two to three, depending on the weather, yep.
Which is better than what the state offers, because there, the state does have a program, but they don't do flyovers on a regular basis, they're not nearly as accurate and clear. You know, these are, these are better than the Google ones that you, you get.
It's a little good and it's a little scary at the same time.
They're measuring your deck, Jeff.
Please, I'm more worried about, you know, I don't know, a little Big Brother-ish.
No, and I don't disagree, but for, you know, for town use, it can make people's lives, you know, a little easier. It's happening anyways, whether we're using it or not.
There you go, good point, fair point.
I understand it.
He's just aware of it now.
Yes, yes.
Always aware of it, but, you know.
You just didn't have access to it.
I don't want access to it.
That sounds great, though, that does. I would just, I'd be wary of that price changing, that's all.
Well, I mean, and that's the thing, if they suddenly decide they're gonna jump high in price for another year, then we would discontinue.
Okay.
You should be able to get it written in, it's not uncommon with software, that you just, you know, you cap out at X.
Right. And their pricing is all based structured by the town size, so, so we shouldn't get a huge jump. But that's our biggest change, otherwise, we're pretty straightforward.
I got nothing.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the explanation, thank you.
Same.
Gonna stay in my house and never come out again.
You don't have to, because we can see everything anyway.
Oh, you can see through the house, thank you, Paula. I'm out of here, out of town, goodbye.
He's done.
That's the next software. There'll be an add-on.
No, thank you.
Comes with the x-ray.
All right, so, thank you both. Get out of here.
Thank you, have a good night, David.
Well, Wayne, you've got two pages, come on up.
It's just us.
Two meetings tonight, huh?
Yeah.
Better than two nights of one meeting, straight.
Yep. All right, we ready?
Yes, sir.
Uh, let's see, 5109, that's basically by contract. 5110, there's, there's no increase there, 5111, that's me, that's by contract. The clerical services, 5112, it looks like a giant increase there, 20.48, but it's not, because the step increases in addition to the cost of living.
Do you know what the step is?
I don't know what the step, what the percentage is from her one to the next. The labor is more likely the fact that we're switching between employees, so it looks like 1.9, but it's basically 3%. That's what the people get for cost of living. The office manager is 3% by contract, temporary salaries, state of thorough overtime. Because we've increased 3% over prior years, I brought it up by 6% just to cover it. We're actually gonna come up to a full crew hopefully at the end of this month, so might be able to actually get some stuff done. Longevity is by contract, assisted people, we have several, three long-term employees. Retirement contributions is by the town, that's, they'll eventually fill that in once they have their data. And that skips all the way down to 5190. Allowance and stipends, and that's by contract. Six vacation, nobody's checking out yet. I went up on the heating by 5%, and that's all you hear now is how everything's going up.
Yes.
The same with the electricity, I went up by 5%, we use a lot of electricity. Water, this is what we actually pay for Easton, for our customers that are there, and that went up by zero, we're still covering that line. Property maintenance is zero, hopefully I, we keep it that way, I just heard the library about that. Vehicle maintenance is staying at zero, equipment repairs, maintenance staying at zero, road repairs at zero, preventive maintenance at zero, watershed maintenance at zero, hydrant repairs at zero.
Can I just stop you right there real quick, the hydrant repairs, did you, what was the plan?
I increased that the previous year to 10 hydrants, so that's about what we'll do a year, is 10 hydrants. We have a little over 500 hydrants in town, it would take 50 years for us to cycle through. It would be better if we had enough crew that we could turn over more, because we have a lot of older hydrants in town that were basically behind, because we had a lot of newer ones fail, so.
And that was my concern, I kind of expected that line item to go up this year, I didn't know if you had anticipated trying to get to more.
If it does, because it's a bottom line, I'll buy more than 10, and then we'll see what we do, but I just have to, I need employees to do it.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Equipment hire, state at zero, leasing is zero, engineering at zero, GAS supplies at zero, data processing at zero, legal services at zero. You just heard Tech Hub, most of his line items went down, this one just actually happened to go up. Laboratory services, so we had to pilot for, we're doing a pilot at Manly, which was unexpected, and we may have to pilot when the new building comes online, so lab services are quite expensive, and depending upon what DEP wants us to test for, it can get really expensive. So that's why you see that one, that's a big increase. Medical is at zero, borrowing costs, that's down. Internet connection, see the, Um, internet connection, see this is where, that's another part of Ed, the next two lines, and that's why you see that, those went down. Um, telephone stayed even, advertising stayed even, office supply stayed even.
Before we leave these pa, this page, just a couple, can we get whatever that step raise and cola is broken out? That's way back up on, um, five-one-one-two. You can, you can get it, I, as long as we get it, I don't need it, you know, if you don't have it this second. And then, um, longevity made sense, my only question, I guess, on the overtime, if you get back to full staff, do you need as much overtime?
Um, yes, well, probably never go down, a lot of that occurs when we do a hydrant flushing at the end of the season. So that's where most of our overtime comes from, and then when you happen to see us at night, standing out there in the cold and the rain, working. But a lot of it occurs right around the hydrant flushing, cause they're out there for almost a month and a half to two months flushing.
Usually right after I change my water filter.
Yeah. That's what everybody says. We have good timing.
Alright, that, any other questions on this page before we?
Um, computer supplies stays at zero, backflow is at five percent, that's a service. We hire somebody to do the testing, because you have to do so many to hold the license. So it's easier to hire somebody to come in, plus if something goes wrong, they're responsible, not us. We did hide, do it internally one time and something went very wrong, so that's why we stopped. Um, mileage is at zero, gasoline zero, tools and supplies at zero, five meters and fittings at a hundred and eleven percent. We use a lot of little parts here and there and brass is going through the roof. I mean, one of our, the shut-offs that we install in houses is over two hundred dollars just for one valve. So that, it's gotten very costly.
Do you charge a setup for a new house?
Yes, we do, so we cover the costs, plus a small amount, so we don't have to keep jacking it, going back and redoing it every year.
So does this cover that kind of thing, like this increase?
It would be that, plus buying the meters.
But I guess that's, like when you?
Oh, it's also, it's on the notes on the side, so we have, we need to keep meters in stock. So I'm figuring there's about forty new houses going in, we have the end of Scotland Street still finishing up. And then we have Crescent Street is about to gear up with, I wanna say there's twenty-nine houses.
Yep, but that, I'm just on the, on the meters and, and all the stuff to set them up, do we recoup all that money?
We do recoup all of that money, yes.
Okay, so while it's a hundred and eleven percent increase, you should get it back in fees.
Yeah, a lot of that basically is the forty meters that I budgeted for that would be new into the system, plus what we keep in stock.
But there's money coming back in, really, that offsets.
Uh, water purifications stated zero, uh, state water tax, uh, went up by five percent. That's what DEP charges us for the water we produce, which is supposed to subsidize them. And yeah, uh, travel stayed at zero, dues and meetings at zero, fleet insurance, so that one's a town one. And eventually that will get filled in. Uh, water facilities insurance is a town that eventually will get filled in. Uh, viability, uh, school education and training, so I'm budgeting for five licensing classes with all the people that I have. I'm hoping to prod them on, cause it's, once you start, you shouldn't stop, they've stopped. I, you know, plus we're about to hire a new guy, we just hired somebody new, so I have two people.
So what you're, how many people, right, like what's your full staff, how many people do you have right now?
So right now I have four, the fifth will be the full staff.
Plus you?
That'll give us, yes.
Well, then the office.
Yep, so that'll give me three people to construction and two people to treatment.
Yeah, what kind of classes was, was the school?
So little licensing classes, we have to send them off, it's one day a week for twelve weeks. That they, they've gone basically the whole day for these classes to learn how to pass the exam. That's, that's only the beginning, they have to do more on their own, more, more time at home studying to pass the test. You just don't take the class and you're gonna pass the test, if you don't put in your time, you're not gonna pass that test. And there are different levels, there are four levels on each side, treatment and distribution. Um, tank inspection stayed at zero. Um, equipment replacement stayed at zero, principal long-term debt, this is, so some of our debt has paid off. So that's why the next ones are all basically negatives, because they're going down, they're paying the payoff. Um, if you look down at the bottom, we'll be finally paying off the painting in the Spring Street tanks. So that'll be the last payment, which will set us up nicely for when Manly is finished, for when that loan kicks in, it'll be a wash basically.
Any question, I mean, the questions I had were really on the other page and I asked in between here, I don't know, Mike, do you have anything?
Nope, you asked my question.
I'll be excited for you when you get back to five full-time employees.
Be nice, head it once.
May you have it for more than a couple of days.
Yeah, hopefully.
That's it then, I think, thank you.
Alright, thank you for your time.
Alright, so we'll go into a, a bunch on your behalf.
Yep, so I'll handle all the smaller ones, so the town accountant, um, it's, it's up a couple of percentage points, just called contractual, everything else is level funded. Town council will be level funded as well with cable TV committee, about eighty-seven thousand oh one, eleven hundred on the other. The planning board, um, this one here, they are, the clerical salaries at three percent, it's just contractual. This is, however, they're an elected board and they have voted themselves an additional five hundred dollar stipend. So I know we don't vote on budgets tonight, um, you know, I'll obviously present a balanced budget to you at the end, but, um, that's the other change from their request.
Yeah, I'm, I have some thoughts, I'll save them for the night when we decide this.
Board of appeals is level funded, just their two percent, uh, three percent contractual on line one. Rent control is the exact same thing, again, these are small budgets, so you just look at two or three percent, it's forty dollars. Eighty-eight compliance is level funded at four thousand, and municipal building needs committee is level funded, except for the secretary as well, at three percent.
Alright, cut up, um, next is, uh, appoint a board member to the capital budget committee for fiscal year twenty-six.
So we do this every year, there are nine people that sit on the capital budget committee. Uh, myself along with Scott Goldner, the treasurer who chairs it. There'll be one person, well, we, we set this up years ago, so we set this up where one person from the Board of Select will be on it as well. Uh, and then there will be three people from the school committee and three people from the finance committee. So in essence, we have three people from FinCom, three people from the school, three people from the town. Again, between the select and myself and the town treasurer. Because we try to have this meeting during the day, because department heads have to make a budget presentation. Um, so it's, usually we do it late afternoon, currently it would be March eleventh, which is a Tuesday. On that date, you will hear presentations, if, they're not due for a couple more weeks, so I can't tell you as to how many presentations there is going to be. If there's three presentations, we do it a little later in the day, it doesn't take that long. Excuse me, if there are nine, ten or eleven presentations, obviously it takes longer. But on that day, uh, what you'll do, we should listen to the presentations. And then we would take a week in between to come back, so it allows those members to either consult with the department head directly. Or in many cases, like what I'll do is I'll physically go to the department and take a look at the machinery or take a look at whatever. All, you know, putting eyes on it is always helpful. Uh, so they come back the following Tuesday and March eighteenth and you take a vote. That usually is a shorter meeting, cause most people feel pretty comfortable how they're going to vote, um, it's a public meeting, you know, so. Um, but we would, I would ask for one person to be appointed to that committee representing the Board of Select.
I've done it the last few years, um, I'm more than happy to do it, but if somebody else wants the experience.
Nominate Jeffrey.
I'll second. All in favor.
Thank you, usually falls on that O C P C.
Yeah, well, I mean, the other part about that meeting is that's, you know, it's all stuff that comes back here, but ultimately this board decides what goes on the warrant, what doesn't. So we can certainly have a discussion about it at that, you know, at that time.
Yeah, I don't have the flexibility during the day, so.
Yeah, there has, there have been instances where stuff's been approved there and not made the warrant from this side, so ultimately we have the, you'll be involved.
Alright.
With that being said, uh, vote to award the Serge DPW service contracts, uh, for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six.
So as you know, we are, we belong to Sersage, uh, there is twenty-seven communities. So we are able to go out to bid and, you know, obviously there's power in those numbers. I'm the vice chair of it, uh, and so this here is our annual bidding process. There are eight items, and this allows our DPW department, if they need something, they just make the phone call, they show up. And quite frankly, it's, it would cost us, we spent forty-one hundred dollars to be as part of this procurement advisory, uh, procurement committee. And just this alone pays for it, never mind everything else we do, so, so with that said, I would ask for a vote.
Make a motion to award the Sersage DPW services contract, March first, twenty twenty-five to February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-six.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Question, do we need to make a motion for the previous appointment?
We did.
We did?
I said I'll nominate, you said second, we said all in favor.
They have instant replay on the, on the, on the town video. Alright, uh, next move to, uh, approve the meeting minutes, uh, for January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes in January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accept the meeting minutes for February fifth, twenty twenty-five for review.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes at February fifth, twenty twenty-five for review.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Alright, moving along, uh, communication reports from boards, commissions and town officials. Um, we have a, uh, we have a letter here from Annie, our town clerk. Um, asking us to appoint Roberta Turner as the new warden for Precinct One. Um, I can read it, cause it's really short, Roberta Turner has been working as a poll worker for town for many years. Roberta filled in as warden for the November fifth presidential election and did a great job. Um, so she's asking for that appointment, any discussion?
No, whatever Annie wants.
Alright. Then I'll attain a motion, I'll make a motion to appoint Roberta Turner as the warden for Precinct One.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Public comment, public is absent. Um, from this meeting tonight, they're all staying home, nice and warm. Uh, town administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so the first three, I just FYI's to the board, letting you know of the annual race for biking, um, event that happens for Rodman for Kids, the River Walk in early June. And also the summer concert series as well. You will see the summer concert series most likely also on a future agenda, because now where we have mobile food trucks, they'll have those there. And so you'll have to approve those, um, at that time. Um, uh, item D is the stair renovation feasibility agreement. This is because I have recommended for a handful of years, we have to do something with those, that front staircase. Anybody who uses it understands why, and I think we've been pretty fortunate. Uh, I had asked the Board of Selectmen back in November if we could set aside ARPA funds for this project. We had agreed at that point that it would, we were estimating twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. The, um, you know, we talked to a handful of engineers, lowest bid came at twenty-two thousand. So we have a little, couple of thousand dollars just in case, cause, you know, they might run into an issue. Um, but, um, I've already, because you've already taken a vote to use those funds, I've approved this with the engineer. But again, I want to advise you that that is now gonna stop working its way through the process. And again, your next meeting will be on March fifth, uh, you will still be doing budgets that night as well.
Thank you.
Mike, anything in addition?
Thank you.
Uh, I just got a question on the stair renovation, what is that gonna do for the facility? Is that, or is that we're still just in feasibility?
That, that will be, uh, to create a design. So for that fee, there, we, we wanna know how we're gonna reconfigure it, we can make it safer. Right now it's, it's not code related, because it's not enough landings, it's not enough light. Because there's some empty space down there, that's also the historical commit, uh, office, we're hoping we can figure all of that. So the idea is, is for them to come up with something, bring it back to this board, it'll probably take six months. Uh, but bring it back to the board and then next year, potentially go to town meeting for funding. If next year's not a good year, at least we have something on the shelf that we can use whenever we think we have the money.
Oh, yeah.
Great.
Something needs to be done on those stairs.
It really does.
I mean, I love historical things, but not when you roll down them.
Exactly.
Not the best.
And, and it's funny, because when I started here, um, when you make that turn, there was no light. So we put in these square lights, there was no lights, there was zero. Um, and you make that turn, and I'm like, somebody's gonna go through the window, and they said, no, that's what the railing is for. I mean, so instead you fall into a railing and so it's like, like it's just not safe.
Yeah. Marcy, anything?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Um, just real quick, I know our DPW's been busy over the last few weeks, so I just wanna say thank you to them. Um, with that, I hear sirens quite consistently when the snow is, and the roads are crazy, so thanks to our first responders as well, as, uh, we're dealing with a little weather pattern here. Um, fortunately, not a ton of snow, but this last was a little nasty, so. Um, but thanks to everybody who's out there keeping us safe while we are, uh, sitting at home comfortably, so I appreciate it.
Actually, I will second that, I will say something, um, I was driving the other night after the snow, or during the snow rather, and it was terrible. And I had, I was driving through a few towns, and the few towns that I was driving through, um, had really bad roads. And I mean really bad, and I hear this every year on the hub, everybody's always talking about how our streets are the best. And it really was, like, once, once I crossed over into West Bridgewater, I could see pavement. I couldn't see pavement three towns before, but I, I finally saw pavement, so, yeah, thank you to our DPW for doing a great job as usual.
I'll take a motion to adjourn then.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.